Eighth meeting of the town planning board. As we begin all meetings with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So, the second item on my agenda is approval of the minutes and we will be holding that until the next meeting. At council's request, I believe. So, the next item on the agenda is the application by Wildcat Renewables. And this is for a decision relative to site plan and special use permit for the solar array located at seventy-three ninety Kirkville Road. This is tax map number zero-five-five dash zero-one dash ten point one. My recollection is we completed the open hearing at the last time. And what we need to do today is we need to go through the special use criteria and then the seeker criteria. And Jamie, if you're okay, I'll go through the special use and would you be kind enough to take us through seeker right after that?
I believe that we're going to do that opposite.
Okay, then why don't you? If you'd like to proceed then with seeker first.
Thank you. Okay, so we're reviewing the short environmental assessment impact form and we're going to answer the following questions. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land?
No.
No.
Will the proposed? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
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 Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
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 Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation and renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails? Oh, already said that one. Will the proposed action impact existing private water supplies or private or public water waste? Waste?
No.
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 Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
No.
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 The proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
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 Will the post-action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Um, each of these have been answered um in the negative no or small impact may occur accordingly. The chair may entertain a negative declaration.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for a negative deck.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Richard made the motion. I didn't hear who it was. Second it.
Mike and Ann.
Ann, it was you?
I made a second.
Okay, second, second by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries negative declaration relative to CCR. And then the next item we have to do is go through the special use criteria. And as always, if anyone has something they wanted to add as we're going through either CCR or special use, just pipe right up and speak up. The first issue is, is the community protected from traffic congestion conflicts, flooding and excessive soil erosion?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the community protected from unnecessary noise, lighting and odors?
Yes.
Yes.
Does this plan protect the community from inappropriate design or other matters of significance?
No.
I've heard one no.
Say that, ask that question again, Joe.
Again, Joe.
Does the plan protect the community from inappropriate design or other matters of significant?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 That's my thought too, yes. Four, does the plan ensure the proposed use will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is proposed?
Yes.
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 Can any adverse impact be mitigated with compliance with reasonable conditions?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Does the project conform with the town's planning objection objections? For example, do we need any kind of conditions with respect to the operations? And are there modifications to the development proposal or design guidelines that can attach reasonable conditions to minimize impacts?
Can I, can I raise an issue with this one, Joe?
Yeah, Rich.
One of the things that has bothered me with these solar projects is that we have approved seven or eight of them over the last seven or eight years. And not a single shovel has gone in the ground. So, I, I am throwing this out for the board to consider. That we put some time constraints on when or how this project is developed. For example, I would like to put a condition on the special use permit that says the project needs to be completed in a certain amount of time. Whether that's eighteen months, two years, two and a half years, I don't know. But I think it's important that we begin to put some time constraints on when these projects actually get built.
Jamie, is there any? Jamie, is there any problem with doing that?
Uh, I believe we can put reasonable conditions. Am I muted?
You're good.
Okay.
Rich, this Mike, I would just add, I would ask this question. Is it appropriate to ask for a start time too?
Well, the, the problem, Mike, just to give you a little background with start time. And I, I had kind of looked at that to, to set a timeframe for getting a building permit, for example. But the building permit is for twelve months, can be extended for several periods. And that doesn't get the project complete. And my concern is, we've got all these solar arrays, farms, whatever you want to call them, that are out there that are approved and nothing's being done. And my personal feeling is we need to do something to push them along if we're approving them. And I saw, I saw that, is it Brian? Brian, I saw you raise your hand. Maybe you have something to say too.
I was gonna mention that um, I think once it starts construction and construction stops, say for some reason that it would be covered. The removal of the facility would be covered under the decommissioning plan. So, I'm not sure that putting in a timeframe would you know, get, get the, the answer that you're looking for.
Well, no, the, the answer I'm looking for is, and I've said this before in other meetings, is that we've approved several of these projects, none of them have even been started. And we're tying up land throughout our town for solar arrays and nothing's being done. So, I'm just simply throwing out there.
Additionally, excuse me, Rich, additionally, there is that uh, there, certain land cannot be used for solar if there's already an approval uh, within so many uh, feet.
One mile. One mile, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, Valerie.
Um, so I'm, I'm new, obviously. Um, but my, my understanding was there are a lot of moving parts and pieces that go into these projects. So, I personally would like to know more about the typical timelines of these projects before I'd be able to put a timeline on them and I think I had heard we were talking about at least having the projects come back for maybe an extension or something. And that's what you're talking about, Rich?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that we have approved over the last seven or eight years projects for these solar farms in different parts of our town. And not a single one has put a shovel in the ground to begin building. And it has gone on and on and on. And I can't speak for whoever the landowners are. And I don't really want to speak for them. I'm just speaking for the town that we've approved these things all over the town of Manlis. Nothing is getting built. So, I would like to put some constraint that if we approve a solar project, that there's a timeframe where it gets built and it's operating. And I, I don't know what the time is, Valerie. I don't know if it's, like I said, it could be eighteen months, two years, two and a half years. I don't know what it is. But it just seems like seven or eight years is a lot of time to tie up a piece of land with a site plan and a an approval that we've granted and nothing gets done. It doesn't make sense to me.
Have we, have we gone back to all of the projects and asked them for an update or where they are or maybe what is holding it up?
You know, I, I hear what you're saying and I'll, I'll say something probably that I'll regret later on, but I don't care. I mean, it's not being built. I don't know why. I, I mean, how long does it take to finance solar panels in the ground to generate electricity for our residents? And if it doesn't get done, then why are we approving these things?
But Rich, is it appropriate to say maybe we need to put a like a, a yearly timeline on this thing? So, if it's not started in a year, they come back to us again?
Well, Mike, as I said earlier, I talked to Randy a little bit about this. And my initial thought was that we give them one year to, to pull a building permit. Well, the building permit can be extended two or three times, which doesn't get the project completed. And I, I'm just gonna speak candidly here. If a developer wants to build solar panel farms in our town and they are not willing to put a time constraint on when it will be complete, my question would be, what's the problem? And this may flush out some of these projects that maybe never will be built. Um, but I just, this is just my, my one, this is me personally speaking. I think we need to have some type of a deadline to say, build it or move on.
I agree.
I think you're absolutely right. It's if, I'm, I'm gonna take a slightly cynical approach to this. And in fact, what the developers are doing is they're optioning land for an indefinite period of time. And I wonder how many of them are doing it to keep the next guy away from them. So that if they can buy up some of the best solar areas for themselves or option them, that takes it away from the competitor who might want to do the same thing. So, I don't care what the reason is, but I'm, I am absolutely with you on this that there's, there's, it's ridiculous to take up all the time that we take up to go through this whole process and prove these damn things. Nothing gets done. And I think seven years is, that's long enough for any kind of a project.
I agree. That's why I'm proposing it that, and, and I don't have a magic crystal ball here that says this is the proper time. But I think if you can't get it done in two or three years or year and a half, whatever the date, whatever the time is, then why are we, as you say, Arnie, why are we wasting our time with this?
I think it's time for Doug and Brian and some of these other folks to sit down and find out just exactly what's going on, what's holding things up. Why should we keep approving these things if nothing gets done? Unless there's something there that we don't understand, in which case I'd like to be enlightened.
Uh, that's my point.
A quick question for, for your staff. Typically, site plan approvals and any special use permits typically have a duration associated with them. Year, eighteen months, two years, whatever it says in the code. I'm not sure, staff, if you guys know, I, I don't have the code in front of me, but typically that is a mechanism for the town to protect themselves for these types of things in that if they do not build or do not show a considerable amount of construction efforts, that site plan essentially void. They would either have to come back for the planning board for extension or even possibly a reapproval. So, um, I'm curious if there, and I would have to look because I don't know off the top of my head and maybe staff knows.
So, this, Jamie Sutphen here. So, um, our code does not have such a provision. This special use permit power was just given to the to this board from the town board um, half a year ago. So, I think that these are issues that have come up. I don't think it's been thoroughly vetted, but I, I will say that many towns do have the following, something similar. You have to pull a permit within eighteen months. Number one. And then there's usually a part two. And you must complete the project within eighteen months. And in this case, because it's a special permit and there are allowed to be reasonable criterion, something like that could be put in this resolution. And, and at that point, their special permit would expire. Or it, you know, if it's otherwise, I think we've been putting seven years on special permits. And, and that could continue to be. If we're interested in trying to get something this evening, I'm putting that out there as a potential suggestion and timeframes that towns do, it is usually in their code. But I do believe that in this context of the special permit that we could put that, something like that. Joe, I'm gonna defer to you on that discussion.
Jamie, this Mike.
Okay, Mike.
Do you know how the WIT handles it?
Um, I, I believe it's, it's a pull a permit in so much time and, and do the, and you know, finish it in so much time.
I can say for Mike. Very. Typically eighteen months and then it's, it's coming back before the board for their approval.
Is that eighteen months to pull permit or to complete the project?
To pull the permit.
See, and this is where it gets a little bit difficult for me because if I'm understanding my discussion with Randy, the, the permit could be pulled. Twelve months later, it can be renewed. Twelve months after that, it could be renewed. And it just continues, you know, we're kind of in the same place that we're at now. I would like to attach something with a special use permit that says it needs to be completed by a certain day. I don't care when you pull the permit. I want it completed. Or why are we going through this?
Okay, folks, we, we, we need to go back to where we were, where we left off. We just finished the last of the six criteria for the special use permit. So, I would entertain a motion that it's a negative declaration, that there's nothing outstanding that would uh, cause it concern for the special use permit to be issued.
Don't move.
Ann made the motion.
Yeah, um, Joe, I think that what um we were trying to say is, if we're going to improve the special permit, which is what we would do by this criterion, right?
Yes.
Saying we're through it, we're gonna prove it. Are we gonna approve it with any conditions?
And that's my point. I think we should.
Well, it's now, is now the time to start a condition?
Yes.
I, I agree with Rich. Let's, let's put a condition on this.
So, would someone like to make a motion relative to a special use permit on this premises?
Well, there's a motion on the floor. Ann made it. It hasn't been seconded. I don't know where we stand.
But Ann's motion didn't set forth a time period relative to the special use permit.
So, can I, can I make an amendment to Ann's motion to say that it needs to be completed within two years?
Um, I, I would recommend that if we do have a time period to pull the permit and a separate timeframe for finishing.
Uh, say that again, Jamie. I didn't hear you.
I would recommend a timeframe to pull the permit and a separate timeframe to finish.
Okay, I guess if I could amend Ann's motion, if that's, if that's proper, I would like to say that they need to pull the permit within one year, complete the project in three.
I'll second that.
I didn't see who that was.
Arnie.
Hi, Arnie. Thanks. Motion made by Richard and second by Arnie.
And, and, and I'm sorry, Joe, and remember, we do want a, a timeframe in total on the um, special permit when they would have to return no matter what. Usually, we've been putting seven years.
We, we've been using seven years as a routine?
Yes.
So, would that be included, Richard, in your motion?
Uh, yeah, I said that, but I was muted, I think.
Okay. And, and Arnie seconded that with the seven years attached?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries relative to the special use permit to, permit to be pulled within one year, the project to be completed within three years and the special permit would be granted for a seven-year duration. That moves us on to site plan. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan. I thought it's fine.
Second.
Second.
Um, I did have one question, folks. We did hear back from the county. The county had no opposition relative to the special permit or the site plan, but they did attach a condition. Did anybody want that condition to be attached to the granting of the site plan?
That was, that was.
Yeah, that should be. That should be.
Yes, it should.
Okay, so we have made a motion and second all in favor of the site plan approval.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mannigan, you got your hand up.
Yes, I was curious if, if you could repeat what the condition was from the county.
It was, it was to work with the county to get a curb cut.
Okay, yep.
And apparently, they had not received the stormwater pollution prevention plan and their department would like to review that as well.
I'll defer to Robert on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, we can, we can gladly send it to them. I wasn't sure if that was really under their jurisdiction. We can talk to, to Doug about that. And, and see if, if that really needs to go to them, but that's not a problem.
Yeah, Jamie, I, I, you and I had discussed that and I felt that that was our jurisdiction is, is lead agency MS four community.
That the county doesn't need to be involved?
Correct.
Okay, I can, I recall that now. Doug.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mannigan, I did want to point out one more thing. About two months ago, I mentioned the fact that there were abandoned trucks on the property. And as I went by today, I believe there's now four abandoned trucks on the property. These are panel trucks. If you would be kind enough to mention it to uh the owner of the property, that, that we're gonna be looking for some compliance about that at some point. Okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. I believe on my calendar, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, we're now moving to Kenwood Homes. This is, this is an initial presentation at Mallard's Landing, phase two, section nine. This is the area including Muscovey Lane between Wigeon and Islesberry Path. This is an amended site plan. A plan had previously been approved and this is an amended site plan pertaining to one particular tax map. One seventeen dash two dash one point one. Sir, someone here on behalf of the applicant? Brian, you got your hand up again?
I, I am not that applicant. I just was curious if, if um you could explain next steps to, will we get minutes or who should I, I guess maybe I should talk to Lisa?
Brian, I can email you tomorrow. We can talk about it tomorrow.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'd just like to formally say thank you to the board for your time. And uh, we're planning to start construction in July this year. Uh, so um, I, I don't believe this was a waste of your time. So, hopefully we'll be out there uh, this summer and I will have the project online uh, come December.
Thank you.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Brian.
Is there someone here on behalf of Kenwood?
Ann, you're muted.
Who's muted?
Dan, Dan Dragobos.
There we go.
There you go. Thank you, Dan.
Wow. I don't have my kids here to help me. I apologize. Steve was gonna present for me, but I see that it looks like he's having trouble staying connected. So, Steve Calserinos is my engineer and he's got a map. And so, I'll just give you a quick background. I purchased the property from David Stringer last year. And when we purchased the property, all the approvals were in place and the map was ready to be filed. And it was, and I've been developing property for thirty years. This was going to be the easiest development that I've ever undertook or undertaken. All it had, all it had to do is build a road. There was no drainage work, no detention basins. It was pretty straight up, pretty straightforward. And then as we're getting into the project and we're getting close to paving the road, we're essentially ninety percent developed. Doug Miller pointed out that one of the properties uh, has a map, is, is mapped as a Army Corps wetland. So, that put the brakes on the whole development because we had to engage the Army Corps immediately to find out we need to uh, get a permit to cross the wetland near, it's, the wetland is near Wigeon. So, to make a long story short, um, we're in the permitting process now. The whole project had to be put on hold because we, the next step was installing the water. And uh, the water department can't install their water until, or complete their water until we get the permit in place. And during the process of getting the permit, we had to do a delineation of the property. So, we hired Delta Engineering to come out and map the wetland. And we hired David Hannig to come out there and flag, and to locate the flagging and put them on our map. Steve has got maps to show you what I'm talking about. Hopefully, he can join us soon. And um, but essentially what it's done is caused, is gonna cost us an entire lot. The wetland that we've mapped uh, takes up an entire lot on the project. So, we're gonna lose it. So, what we're coming to the town for at this stage of the game is to see if it's possible. We don't want it to be drawn out at all. If it's gonna be a drawn out process, we'll probably abandon this uh, request. But the request we'd like to make to the board is to make up the lost land um, by creating another lot. And in the process of doing this, it's gonna, the size of the lots are not gonna be conforming. So, the zoning calls for forty square foot lots, which we have currently. If we were to uh, try to make up the lost, the lot that we're losing due to this wetland, um, it would require you to agree to, I believe it'd be four lots at thirty thousand square feet. And my thought process would be, you know, the easiest way, if it's something that you're agreeable to, if you have the authority, which I'm not sure you do, um, would be to try to see if you could uh, approve it under a two-seventy-eight. And uh I, I think that's it. I, I wish I had the maps to show you myself and I'm hoping Steve can still jump in here. Um, but that's essentially uh, why we're here tonight, to get some feedback from the board um, about our predicament and to see if there's a pathway to regain our lot that we lost.
Uh, Dan, I, I will tell you that we're not gonna talk about two-seventy-eight. So, well, you know, that's, that's way, I mean, you would never want to go that route. That's way too complicated.
Can you hear me?
Complicated. Well, hi, Steve.
Yeah. Okay. Just letting everybody know I'm here and Dan.
That would take like year, that would take months and months and years. Clustering is quite a process.
Well, my engineer looks like gonna star in a zombie movie or something there, so.
Um, is it, Lisa, can you pull up the map?
Uh, I cannot.
I can, I can screen share them if I have the ability to do so.
Thanks, Steve. Yes, go for it.
Um, I can pull up either the previously approved layout first, if you'd like to see that, or I can pull up what um Hannig's office has generated as what we're proposing.
Can you show us the first one, the one that's approved? Can you show us the first one, the one that's approved as is?
Okay. All right, so this is the one that I believe everyone can see this, Dunn and Scromo sheet?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. If you can see my cursor, Lot 245 is up towards Wigeon Path.
Yes.
That would be the west side of the site. That's the lot that is basically entirely encumbered by wetlands. And basically, what the proposal would be in this case is to just combine that with Lot 246 and make this one large lot. The only lots that we're proposing to modify would be these lots along the easterly side of Muscovy Lane. There's currently four lots now. All of them, I believe, are 200 feet frontage. And what the proposal would be would be to reduce those to 160 feet frontage, which is still in excess of what the code minimum of 150 feet is. But the lot areas would be anywhere between 32,000 square feet, which I believe would be these two would be the two center lots, and then there would be three lots that would be approximately 36,000 square feet. Lot 249, which is the northernmost lot on the west side of the road, is sold and I believe currently under construction. What was previously Lot 203, down on the southeast end, that was actually sold and split between these two existing lots on Wigeon Path some time ago, and so that's, that's what's currently been approved. And this, although it's turned, I'll see if I can rotate it for you. Now it's oriented the same way as the previous map. Here is lot, what we're calling Lot 246 now. That's basically what Lot 245 and 246 were before. These other three lots, 249 stays as is, since it's already under construction, and 247, 248 are gonna stay the way they were. This is lot, what was previously Lot 203. It's been split between 202 and 201 from a previous section. And then, again, the four lots that were here, we're proposing to split those into five lots now. And again, I think the minimum lot size in area is just over 32,000. And that's two of the lots, I believe, these two. And then the other three are about 36,000 square feet. So I guess with that, if there's any questions, I can maybe answer them.
I have a question. It looks like the lots behind those, the 300s, are those about the same size as what you're proposing?
I am gonna assume those are all in excess of 40,000 square feet, but I have not verified that. That's what the normal zoning code requires, is 40,000 square foot minimum.
Okay, so they're deeper?
Yes.
Okay, we just can't see it on that one.
Yeah, and on these proposed lots, again, we didn't change any of the depth. The road stayed where it is, the rear lot line stayed where it is, so we really just changed the frontage width. And that's how we got to a smaller lot area.
Joe, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, in order for us to approve this, there needs to be a variance granted because we don't have the authority to approve lots that are not conforming.
That is correct. That is correct. We'd have to send it to the zoning board of appeals relative to a variance. My concern is those are significantly smaller than what's mandated. And I'm wondering if that's fair to all the adjoining neighbors to suddenly look across and see it's much smaller lot? Or the, or the ones in the 300 lots, looking behind them and seeing such a small lot compared to what they have purchased?
Right.
I agree with that, and I have another question, and I, I don't have the deed restrictions for that development. But are there any restrictions in the HOA documents that declare what minimum lot sizes can be?
Now, that's a no.
Okay, so lot sizes in Mallard's Landing can be any size that you want, as long as it's approved.
Well, it's not part of the homeowners association. This is a standalone.
But it is part of Mallard's Landing, correct?
Correct, but it's not attached to a homeowners association.
Isn't Mallard's Landing a homeowners association?
Certain sections are, but Whistling Swan is not, and this section of Muscovy is not.
Okay, all right. I wasn't aware of that.
From a procedural standpoint, one thing that may be able to be done is if there's any, you know, they, they can go to the ZBA no matter what, with or without a recommendation from this board. But we could begin a subdivision process, have them present this, call for a subdivision public hearing. Of course, we would not be able to approve it. At that point, we could have public input that would perhaps assist with the recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. There would be another public hearing at zoning board of appeals at that point. If it does get approved or in some format, then it would come back to us, to this board, having already had the subdivision public hearing.
Jamie, I hear what you're saying from an expediency standpoint, but why, why would we entertain a subdivision on lots that are non-conforming prior to a variance?
To get the opportunity, in this particular instance, a concern was expressed about the neighbors and the fairness to the neighbors, and that we would begin to get some public input at planning board. That's the only reason.
Okay, all right.
I wanna back up to the, you said you were gonna ask to combine 245 and 246, but the street's in the middle of them. I'm not sure I'm following, but what, what was that you were asking, Don?
They got renumbered. This is the proposed one.
Uh huh.
So the original one, 245, was contiguous to 246.
Right.
It was all wetlands.
Right, that's the original 245 where it was, just had the cursor. There we go. So that's the lot being, that's fully encumbered now by wetlands.
Dan, I think you're gonna run into a problem with the neighbors because you've already got small lots to start with, and you're proposing to make them narrower in order to accommodate the wetlands. And that squeezes the houses closer together. I can't speak for the folks who live there, but I'd be very uncomfortable if I was sitting on an acre or an acre and acre. And all of a sudden, I saw a whole development come in on three quarters of an acre lot, which a lot of these are.
Yeah, I know, I don't necessarily disagree with that. The only saving grace would be the widths would still be more than others. They wouldn't be the narrowest, you know, the widths are beyond, you know, exceed the requirements. It's just, you know, where we're losing is depth, which we don't have now anyways, but, you know, a lot of depth. So but yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna push this very hard, you know, if this is, you know, it's just that, you know, for me, it was a reliance thing, you know, and and just trying to find a way to you know, preserve the, the number of lots, you know, the number of tax parcels, future tax parcels.
Jamie, if they go to the ZBA for a variance, are they required to have a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so some of these concerns would be flushed out in the ZBA public hearing prior to coming back to us for a subdivision approval?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
They look awful small to me, those lots.
Yeah, I, I agree with Arnie. I think it's an, I understand the predicament you're in. It's just unfortunate that the lots that are not as deep and large as the other ones are the ones that have to then be condensed.
Yeah, it's, it's all, if we had known we had a wetland issue, we could have reconfigured the road and reconfigured the lots and made it all work, but it's kinda
Dan, can you take?
The worst possible time.
Is, is the road, is the road just one lane wide right now?
The road is, is just about ready for pavement. We already have a little bit of pavement laid in front of 249.
Okay.
And that's, and that's a town road.
It will be, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, at this point, I think you would need to go to the zoning board of appeals, have a public hearing there, get the public input there. But Dan, I gotta be candid with you, Dan. I'm, I'm just concerned about the size, the disproportionately small size. And I hate to say it, but I, I, I think by dividing it the way you're dividing it, you may be defeating the project. Whereas if you went one lot smaller and gave them all a little more width, it would be much more favorable.
Well, that's why we're here tonight, to get, you know, to get your feedback, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's much we can do without a variance.
No, we can't do anything without the variance.
Right.
But even if they prove the variance and it comes back to us, we, we still may have our own concerns about the size.
Once, once they, yeah, once they give the variance, there would be a, a great difficulty in limiting it in some way.
Right.
In size, just so you know that.
Well, Jamie, the alternative would be for us to pass it to the zoning board, but not with a recommendation that they approve it.
I, yeah, I mean, it's, yes, that, that is, that's correct. I mean, you need to, but, but I'm not sure that, I, I'm not sure what this board is thinking, and if there's enough information.
Small. I think they're too small.
Personally, I, this is just, just me looking at this. I mean, in order for us to do this, it has to go to the ZBA. Personally, I would not want to make a recommendation for the ZBA to act on giving a variance, given what's going on all around it. I, I think we have to be careful on doing that. I would rather see the lots the size that they are now, that was approved, as opposed to downsizing them or making any type of recommendation to the ZBA, but that's just my opinion.
If I could just offer one comment?
Sure.
If, if you take a look at the lots that I have up there right now, 45, 204, 238, the smaller ones that we're talking about, if you compare those to the 300 lots that are behind them, they're actually wider in width than those lots. So I mean, if, I understand the lot area concern, and really, there's nothing we can do about that. But the depth isn't changing, and the lot width, even though we are reducing it from what it was, it is still wider than the lots that back up to it.
But I, but I think you, you hit the, you nailed it when you said the square footage is less, and that's an important piece to this.
Yeah, absolutely. I, absolutely. I'm just looking at it from the context of, if you're looking at it from the road, how close is one house gonna be to the next house? It won't be any worse than what's behind it, if you look at it from that point. If it gives you any ability to maybe reconcile the change and how it will look to the rest of the neighborhood and the people that are already there.
What price home were you gonna put in there?
Well, it's certainly a lot higher than it was a year ago. So the one that's there now is, you know, is, is north of, you know, is near a million, and then I would suspect that it's gonna be 600 or an up in there.
Yeah.
Six, 700 and up.
Wow.
Lots bigger.
Yeah, we're not gonna sell out overnight, that's for sure.
Would it, would it make any sense, just a thought, if you like took 238 out of here and split it between the other four lots? To make up the acreage, does that make any sense or not?
Well, they're still gonna lose, they're still.
We would leave it the way it is. The way it is right now, there's four lots on that side of Muscovy Lane. What we're proposing is to change that to have five lots in that same stretch.
Steve, say that again, sorry.
So from lots.
Currently.
There's five lots. There's five.
As currently approved, there's four lots between what we're showing is Lot 245, 204, 238, 239, and 240.
That's five.
That's five, right. But over that same, over that same area, the current approval is, shows four lots.
Right.
So if Dan didn't wanna make any changes, he'd have four lots in that same amount of space, which is what I think, Mike, you had just mentioned.
Well, that's what I was looking at, to make up the, the acreage.
Right, and that would. Right now, they're already 200 feet apart, all more than 40,000 square feet.
Can you show the approved drawing again? Maybe?
So that would be.
Right there.
Yeah, that would be 204, 38, 39, and 40.
Okay.
Because 203 is what you said is, became part of 201 and 202.
Correct.
That's part of those, yeah.
So I think.
So what you're, what you're really trying to do is make up the lot that you're losing to the wetland in this area.
Right, yes. Now, we, you know, just so you know, we did try and do the same thing on the other side of Muscovy Lane. Obviously, the lots are deeper. But the problem is, they're on the inside of a curve. And as you can see, as you go to the back, they just, they turn into pie shapes and they get really, really narrow. So it makes it an undeveloped lot in, you know, and if we were to pick up an extra lot.
I, I don't know who was speaking earlier on behalf of the developer, but whoever it was said, we're not gonna push this thing, or we're not gonna, I can't remember the exact term, but I, I read it to mean, we'd like to get this, but if we don't, okay. So I guess, Joe, and I'm turning to you because I'm, I'm kinda puzzled where we go. We can't do anything other than ask them to go to the ZBA, and I guess we could make a recommendation, either, either we'd like it or we don't like it. If, if.
Or, excuse me, or ask the ZBA to consider you know, some, you know, just consider the following points, A, B, C, or something.
Okay, I, I'm not sure. I don't think I've ever been involved in making a recommendation to the ZBA, so I'm not sure how that works, but we can't approve it the way it is, so.
Correct.
Personally, I'd prefer that they keep the existing, and that would resolve the issues that I'm seeing. And I appreciate the fact you've lost a lot out of this and that you're trying to make it up, but I don't think that this is the right way to make it up. If I referred it to the ZBA, I would want to include a negative recommendation.
I agree.
Yeah, you took the words out of my mouth, Joe.
I agree.
So while we're all here, with the change on the wetland and losing the lot, Jamie, I guess this is more a question for you. Does it impact the ability for the chairman to sign the map when we're ready to file it? That we've lost a lot, that we need to come back to you for losing a lot, I guess?
I think it, like, if you kept it the way it is, we would just probably do a resolution that it's in substantial conformity with the prior plan, the one lot having become, you know, absorbed into wetlands. I probably could recommend that kind of a tact.
Okay.
Yep.
So Dan, it's kind of your decision whether you want to go back to the originally approved one, or whether you.
Yeah, we will. We're, I'm not going to the. Yeah, we will. We're, I'm not going to the zoning board. Without your blessing, I guess, it's not, we're, we're under significant time restraints as well. I mean, we're, we're held up because of the permit, but once we had the permit, I'm going to be under a lot of pressure to finish the road.
Well, we're very sorry, we're very sorry for your loss, the, the lost lot. But I really think continuing on with the initially approved is the way to go within fairness to the neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I could, we could debate that, but it's, you know, that's fine. I, I, I hear you loud and clear.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Doug, Doug, this is a question for you, and I'm a little confused. There, there was no basins, retainage basins, detention basins in that subdivision, which would lead me to believe that in the SWIP, the drainage goes somewhere else, but they're not part of an HOA. Where does it go? Who maintains it? That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I don't know if you have an answer, or you want to get back to me.
Drainage all goes over to the pond over near Whistling Swamp. And that was approved, proved a long time ago.
And that is part of an HOA?
I don't believe it is, but I can look into that. I think Dan's correct.
Yeah, it's not part of an HOA. That's before the town changed their policy, so that was
So who maintains that? Who maintains that basin?
Who? I believe it's the town.
Okay, all right.
And we've been in there, we've maintained things in there in the past.
Okay, all right, I'm done.
Okay. That being the case, we're going to move on. Next item on the agenda is an application by CVE North America. This is their initial presentation. This is for a subdivision site plan and special use permit for a solar array on Doogood Road and Manlius. This also is only one tax map number, 099-1-3. Is there someone here that can speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes. Hi.
Hi there.
Carson Wyman from CVE.
Carson, can you just talk to us and fill us in what you'd like to do and why, and how you're going to do it?
Sure, yeah, thanks for having us tonight. I also have Jared Lusk from Nixon Peabody and Laura from Tectonic. And then Christina Tapia, she's an engineer internally at CVE. So the whole team's here, we're happy to see you guys. I have some slides planned. Would like to share my screen if that's possible.
Yes.
Great. Oh, yep, the button's already there, already. Great. So you can see these?
Yes.
All right. Great, thanks for having us. My name's Carson Wyman, I'm with a solar energy developer called CVE. And we're here to talk about our solar farm off of East Seneca Turnpike, 8119 East Seneca Turnpike. Give you a little information on the company, a quick slide on who we are, and then we can get into the project. So CVE, we're an international renewable energy developer. The headquarters is in Marseille, France. There's about 200 employees worldwide. We have an office in New York City. We've been in New York City for about four years now. We just wrapped up construction on six projects, 32 megawatts. We actually got some shovels in the ground in Massachusetts. And we've been in New York for the past year and a half, and this is one of our projects in our New York portfolio. Globally, there's 350 megawatts in operation for CVE. And we're a little bit different than other developers. We own our projects long-term. So we have an equity stake in each of our projects throughout the life of the project, 30, 35 years, and a little bit different than most other developers that they like to get it permitted and, and sell it off to somebody else. So, yep, here's the team, myself, Christina, and then externally Jared and Laura. Here's the project. We've put together a concept, an initial site plan, and we submitted it, submitted it to the town the other day. Currently, the parcel is one parcel, 240 acres total, and we're planning to subdivide it into four smaller parcels. Total system size across those parcels is 16 megawatts, 11 megawatts AC. We just actually received our interconnection results from the utility and confirmed, and confirmed that we can connect 11 and a half megawatts, so that was a bit of really good news.
Can I, can I ask a question? Why, why do you want to subdivide it?
Thank you, Rich.
I have the same question.
There's a maximum system size per parcel for this community solar program. So you're only allowed to do 5 megawatts AC on a single parcel.
So pursuant, pursuant to what rule or legislative?
There's a state level energy authority called NYSERDA.
Yes.
They put that limitation on, on the community solar projects in New York. So the utility locally here, the infrastructure can only handle 11 and a half megawatts. To achieve that 11 and a half megawatts, we'd have to subdivide it into three parcels, 5 megawatts, 5 megawatts, and then 1.5 megawatts.
All right, that, it's interesting because we have viewed several projects over the last several years that has never come up. I've never heard anybody mention that restriction.
Yeah, this is unique because this is a utility scale sized project. 16 and a half megawatts is a very large cluster of solar. Usually our projects are 5 megawatts AC, 6 megawatts DC, they're a single community solar project, but given the scale of parcel, 240 acres and how flat and cleared it is and removed from all the butters and whatnot. And then also given the, the amount of capacity on the grid, we're able to get 11 and a half megawatts. And that's what we're proposing.
How can they put three parcels together if there has to be a mile between?
Another good question.
Yep, another good question. Would like to talk about that. Seems like there was some, you know, room to have a conversation around that in the zoning laws.
It's, it's, it's the same project, it just happens to be on three parcels. It's just, it's not a, it's the same development. We're trying to thread that needle.
I have to look at that.
Yep.
If we could go back to our discussion earlier about the special use permit and the restrictions that we want to put on it, does that present a problem for you?
No, that should be fine. I think one year to pull the permit and two years for construction is definitely fair.
Okay, all right.
Those other projects sound like utility scale projects. It's a totally different program in the state of New York. And they have a different, entirely different interconnection process as well. They don't, they work through NISO, which is the Transmission Authority, the National Grid, which is the distribution level utility company. I know those are pretty high-risk projects, so maybe that's why, maybe some of them failed and, and never got to a point where they could get them financed. It's, the economics are very, very thin at that scale because you're getting a different rate for your electricity when you go to utility scale. It's, it's 60%. It's in half, it's, yeah, 60% less, 50, 60% less than, than these community solar farms. Yep. Out of the 240 acres we're disturbing, 79 acres. We, there's almost no wetlands on site. We performed a wetlands delineation. We executed site control with the property owner back in August, and we've been working plans and working on the interconnection agreement ever since. I don't know if you've ever heard of Tarkey Lombardi or the Lombardi family, but that's who owns the site. And yeah, the, the there will be community solar credit to about 700 homes locally. And they'll receive 10% discounts on their monthly utility bills. The property is owned restricted agricultural, agriculture, RA, and, and solar is a permitted use by way of special permit.
How do you access the property?
Yep. There's one access road off of East Seneca Turnpike, right here in the southeast corner.
Okay. Is that the only access? Would you have an access on Doogood Road eventually, or?
We have access for some utility equipment. There's a road that stops that, that goes in, I don't know, maybe 200 feet because there'll be a point of interconnection up here off Doogood Road in the northwest corner, but not planning on extending that road mostly because it's rocky over here. This stretch happens to be rocky, you know, everything else is, is nice and flat.
Can, can you just point out where Doogood Road is? Where East Seneca Turnpike is? I can't tell from this picture.
This, this little, this gray line is Doogood?
I, I can't see your
Yeah, we can't see where
You can't see my cursor? Okay, I'm sorry. West of the facility, you see the homes? And that's the road that their, their, their driveways come into is Doogood. Along the western edge of this image. And then in the southeast corner of the image, there's a road that cuts diagonally. That's East Seneca Turnpike.
I'm totally confused, but okay.
I kind of got it is
Yeah.
That, that, that driveway, though, to go back to the project does not exist right now, is that right?
That's correct. It doesn't exist. We will install a access driveway to enter the facility off of East Seneca Turnpike.
And anybody that, I drove by yesterday and it's the access road would be like between the high school and like where the field is and the entrance to the high school and the village of Manlius.
I think it's pretty close to the cell tower entrance, right?
Yeah, we would actually be utilizing the existing entrance from the cell tower.
Correct.
So it would be the same entrance way.
Okay.
For a project this size, how much can, you know, what, what would the construction timelines be? Would you be doing different phases?
Yep. Construction timelines, I'm not involved in that process. I know it takes about four to six months. Probably closer to six months for a project this size.
So it's going to, the, the project itself is going to be 79.2 acres, but you're you're going to own the 240.7 acres, is that correct?
That's correct. It's not a lease, it's a purchase, and CVE will own the property.
Okay.
And, and that property you're buying from Tarkey Lombardi?
Yes. We have an executed option to purchase the property.
Has it been executed?
Yes, executed option of purchase.
I'll be honest, I got to do a little research on what Ann asked earlier, and that is, we have a restriction of one mile from each one of these projects. Since you're subdividing it, I think it turns it into three or four projects, and in order to get comfortable, I just need to do a little research.
Okay.
I'm with you on that, Rich. Also, this is a type one seeker action. And so we'll have to declare a lead agency and move forward with that process.
Okay.
Right. Understood. That makes sense. Here's a, a few stats on the site, just to maybe give you some more points of reference. Subdividing the 240 acre parcel into four lots. Lot one is a, a small lot for a cell tower in the southeast corner. Can you see my mouse now?
Yes.
Okay, great. That, that'll be owned by the Lombardi family. There's a cell tower. Lot one held by the Lombardi family. Lot two is 59 acres, 1,000 feet of frontage. Lot three is 135 acres, about 750 feet of frontage. Lot four, up in the north, 43 acres, 400 feet of frontage. You know, well removed, the site is
Excuse me, frontage on which, on what street?
Sure, yep, so for for lot four, it would be up here. It's slightly cut off, but it's off of Doogood Road for lot four. And lot three is frontage on Doogood Road right here. And lot two is frontage on East Seneca Turnpike down here.
You're going to, you're going to have, you're going to have a salt, you can see the solar panels for Doogood Road?
No, no, and I was just about to, to say we're well removed from the road here for East Seneca Turnpike and Doogood Road. You know, over 1,000 feet from East Seneca Turnpike, almost 2,000 feet from Doogood Road. Which is this distance, we're roughly, at the closest point, we're 1,000 feet from a home. We're, so we're, we're at least 1,000 feet removed from any home or road with this facility.
And each and each lot will have their own access, or will they, there be easements across lots to get to other lots?
Yep, so each lot will have the appropriate amount of frontage, but there will only be one access road coming, coming off of East Seneca Turnpike in the southeast corner and working in the north across the other parcels is what we have laid out here.
So there'll be some recorded easements giving them access?
Yes, yeah.
If I could just be, also be, just be heard on the, on the saturation issue, Mr. Rosati, that you raised. It, it's not an express prohibition in the code. If you read the code carefully, it says that, that you should have a mile in between each one unless the town board in this, it says, in, in, considering whether to issue a special use permit, the town board shall consider the proximity of similar large solar systems to the ones proposed. In no event shall an L, a large-scale solar system be placed within one mile of an existing facility without specific findings by the town board. Again, I think that's supposed to be the planning board based on what I've heard from
Yes, that, that changed to the planning board.
It's right, it's the special use permit, special use permit was with the town board, it's now with the planning board. But that's the genesis, I guess, of where that came from.
And it says the, the planning board finds that such placement does not adversely affect the community character of the surrounding properties. So if the planning board were to say, you know, the typical rule is one mile apart from each other, but in this circumstance, again, based on the, the dimensions, that Carson, et cetera, just put, put it out, and the community solar nature of it, that actually benefits the the town of Manlius, the residents of the town of Manlius with the, the ability to buy the renewable energy that it may justify, that the planning board's determination in, in furtherance of that.
Thanks, Jared. I have not, this is the first time I've seen this, and I haven't had a chance to look at that provision, but I certainly will.
Thank you.
And just, I have a question too, so that we all understand this slide. Oh, sorry, this, yeah, this particular slide. Because it says distance to surroundings, so homes on east and 12, you know, 1250 feet partially wooded. But just because, again, I was there just yesterday and I saw, so it's, the, the drawing is cut off a little bit from what it is on the map on the right side of the drawing on the east. That, that, when we're That that when we're talking about surroundings, that is the school grounds right there and school fields. So baseball fields, soccer fields, the
Correct.
All of the athletic facilities in the school right there. So I just wanted everybody to understand where that is. And there is a tree line there. But it is actually closer than that because I don't know what the twelve fifty feet you guys are referring to there.
Yeah, the the twelve fifty feet is to the nearest home in that direction. Past the field, the school field, you get to a residential subdivision twelve hundred and fifty feet away is all I'm saying there. But yeah, the eastern edge of this facility is the least screened. About fifty feet of trees before you hit the school fields.
Thank you.
To the north, to the west, to the south, it's it's very well wooded, very well screened.
And and Valerie, just to to say this, nothing stops us from requiring them to plant some trees or to put some screening in if we believe that it's too visible from one direction or the other.
Yeah, there is a a solid tree line there, which it looks like from the drawing, and I know this is early on, but it looks like.
Are you using any of the land that has been farmed?
Yes. Which this might be a good side slide to show. Cornfields.
Right. Are you using all of it? Part of it?
We're using all of the cleared area. Yep, all of the cleared farm area. You know, probably eighty percent of the solar array itself is on the cleared farm area. We'll have to clear a hand, we'll have to clear some trees, but most of the projects on the cleared farm.
I don't know who I'm asking this question to, but I'll throw it out there anyway. You're subdividing this because of the five, it was a gigawatts requirement?
Yeah, megawatts.
Megawatts, okay. Is there a procedure to ask for a waiver of that?
No, there's not.
And that is a state law?
That's a state law, NYSERTA.
Okay.
Community solar program. They limit you to five megawatts AC. To be able to do this on one parcel, it would have to be a utility scale program. You'd have to connect to transmission lines, which are not near to this site. I have to win a procurement, an RFP with NYSERTA to buy the energy at wholesale rates.
This subdivision scheme in other towns?
You know, this is the first one that we are proposing to subdivide.
And that's because of the size?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
One question about the seven hundred homes. How is that like do homes have to be within a certain distance of the project to participate or?
They just have to be in the same utility. So anybody grid can receive these credits. There's a maximum amount that you there's a maximum amount of credits that you can allocate to a single utility account. That seven hundred dollars is doing the math from how much energy will be produced versus that maximum amount that could be allocated to.
Okay, but not necessarily then homes even in the town of Manlius?
Not necessarily, but that's something we could partner with the town on is making sure that homes in
Okay.
Manlius get first right of refusal at these credits.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? I know you've talked about the the other projects that have come before the town that that haven't been successful. Are any of them the community solar plan that that CVE is proposing here? Or are they all the utility grade?
They're all utility grade.
Yeah. Okay, that's why I think the difference. Have you talked? Have you folks talked to the high school at all about this project or the I should say the school district?
We have not, no. Be happy to do so, though. We can I guess we can reach out to their attorney, the school district attorney.
And I'm I'm probably putting my nose where it doesn't belong, but I'm just thinking that that is probably something that is necessary as we move forward because it's so close to school district property.
Yep.
My next question is to Doug. Doug, are we in a position yet? Have you had an opportunity to have you been provided with SWIP materials?
I'm not.
Okay.
Obviously, we we're we're waiting to get a little further along and get your feedback on this before we went through the process of completing that SWIP.
I think we have. I think I think we have a threshold question. I and I'm sorry I don't have an answer yet, but I will on this this idea of putting all of them you know, on separate lots and close together and so forth. And and I hear what your your position is, Jared. I appreciate that. So that that's almost a threshold matter. And then, you know, then we need to look at the SWIP. Of course, we need subdivision. You know, we need public hearings, the whole seeker process, et cetera. So it's a little it's a little ways.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, and and Jamie, I'll just add to that. When we wrote the law for the solar farms and the one mile distance between at least I wasn't aware of the restrictions that the state had. And so I need to kind of give that a little thought of how we look at this. Because I really do think one of the concerns we had when we wrote that is that we we didn't want the whole town to turn into a a solar farm. And we wanted to have space and distance, but I was not aware of this five megawatt restriction.
And and what since you were involved in the drafting of that code, did you contemplate solar firms of this size?
Yeah, we we didn't anticipate that either. But of course, when we wrote that, Jamie, I got to tell you, we did it several years ago. We it was a first go at something like this and we knew as time went on, things would change. We'd have to modify the law, the technology changes, so on and so forth. So it it isn't surprising that we find ourselves with a dilemma of, you know, how do we handle a certain thing? So we'll figure it out.
Carson, I've got two short questions for you from a business perspective. What can you access all of the solar arrays from that single driveway that you're going to create during the winter?
Yes, we can, you know, out if if needed.
Okay, you are aware that we do get a little snow in the winter?
Yes.
Okay. The second question is, of all the places in the United States of America that you could have chosen, this is the cloudiest city in the world. Why did you choose us? What is it about Manlius? It's so attractive? From a business point of view, trying to generate electricity when the sun shines maybe two days a week on a good day or a good week.
Sure. Yeah, I've heard that Syracuse is one of the, you know, central New York is one of the cloudiest in the states. But you know, we have weather data over twenty thirty years. We know exactly how much sun shines down on this part of the world. We have some pretty sophisticated financial models. And the economics still do make sense, given the amount of sunshine.
Okay, thank you.
I can just comment, my mother-in-law lives in Syracuse and sunshine follows her everywhere.
This is in fact recorded.
All right, folks, at this point, we're not able to move forward any further. We will hold up on the lead agency until the next time you come before us and we'll we'll see how everything is developing. Unless you got any further questions, Carson?
One more question. About the access road, maybe maybe Laura wants to talk about that. We had a few questions on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit more in depth about the design of the site. So for the hydrology of the site, there the DEC has provided a guide a guidance on solar array construction. And we performed a hydrological analysis of the pre-development versus post-development conditions and it meets the criteria of that guidance so that the stormwater management only has to account for the added impervious to the site. So for this site, considering the size of it and length of the road, we decided to propose a grass surface access road. So it would be engineered to withstand the the loading of a fire truck. And we'd also do some geotechnical investigations first, you know, to to ensure the design thicknesses would work with the site conditions. But this would this would help with the hydrology of the site because it would continue, it would it would continue to keep it between the pre versus post development. It would keep it below the five percent. So we would not be creating any more point discharges to the area. And it kind of also goes with the green approach of the solar energy as well.
Is one last question, Joe, if I could. Is any of this two hundred and forty acres or the driveways within the village of Manlius?
Yes.
No, no. None of the proposed actions are in the village, but that southern portion of the property is located in the village.
So part of the two hundred and forty acres is in the village?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And the solar the solar part will take what seventy nine acres?
Yes.
Okay, that's roughly. That's including the road too.
Will that be reduced, Laura? Because that's this layout and we're going to reduce this layout a teeny bit.
Yes, if the the size of the array will reduces, that will reduce also.
Yeah, it'll be less than seventy nine acres.
Okay, and what type of what type of panels are you going to put up?
They're Hanwha panels, four hundred and thirty watts each. And they're hackers. They follow the sun throughout the day, east to west.
They move, they follow the?
Yes, they they face east in the morning, west in the afternoon. Perfectly straight up towards the sky at noon. But yeah, Laura was saying that we're we'd like to propose a grass covered road to limit the impervious surface on site, limit limit the stormwater design that's needed. And yeah, that'll be a part of our detailed submission in the next month or two.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Thank you for coming today and we'll wait to hear more information from you.
Amy, should I be in contact with you regarding the that setback issues at where we go from here?
You're muted, Jamie.
They like me that way. Yes, yeah, we'll talk about it further. Thanks, Jared.
Thank you very much.
Okay, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, folks, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Last time we had the public relative, they reported to us relative to the whole glen woodland development. What I'd kind of like you to do, if you could kindly do this, is contact Jamie and let her know your feelings and thoughts. We want to hear from everybody what your thoughts are about the development, what your concerns are about the developments so that we can when we make a decision, we want to make a decision that is very informative and based on facts and opinions as to specifics. Jamie, is that okay with you? You're muted again.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Do you would you prefer that we just call and talk with Jamie about?
You're welcome. You're welcome to send your comments to me in a confidential email. Individually, not as a group. And also you may call me.
Okay. Do we need Jamie, do we need to put attorney client privilege on the email that we send you?
You can do that if you like.
Okay.
Okay.
It will be treated as such.
When do you want this by, Jamie?
I I think, well, it's fresh in your mind within the next week, just based on what you what you know so far, what you have in your comments so far. There'll be more discussion, there'll probably be more public discussion with board as well. And Doug and I and other consultants will be working on the next step of the seeker process.
Okay. I'm seeing nothing else on our agenda. So Fred, did you want to make a motion?
I'll move with your second.
Motion made by Fred and second by Mike. All in favor? Hi. We stand adjourned, folks. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, Lisa.
Good night.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.